Louise, you can take it away whenever you're ready.
Want to wait a few more minutes?
Okay.
Just maybe two minutes, see if we get a few more people.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. Okay, so we're up to thirty-four, thirty-five.
Okay, I'm good to start. Good evening, bonsoir. My name is Louise Lanto and Elaine McDonald and I are co-chairs of the Cornwall branch of the Cornwall Health Coalition. We begin this meeting of the Cornwall Health Coalition by acknowledging that we are meeting on the uporiginal land that has been inhabited by indigenous peoples from the beginning. As settlers, we're grateful for the opportunity to meet here and we thank all generations of people who have taken care of this land. In particular, I acknowledge that I'm speaking to you from South Glengarry in the traditional territory of the Haudenasani, Mohawk, and Huron-Wendak. This territory is covered by the Upper Canada Treaty. And we'll begin this evening, I have a short presentation, I guess, to talk to you a little bit about the history of the Cornwall Community Hospital. It has a long and storied history, this. It is a civic treasure, that it's the most valuable public asset owned by the one hundred and ten hundred thousand people in its catchment area. In two thousand fourteen, the community of Cornwall, SDNG and Akra Sossney wrapped up a twelve million dollar fundraising drive to redevelop the Cornwall Community Hospital. And the funding continues to stay and people continue to give generously through fundraisers and donations. But the government is not keeping pace. Today, barely ten years after that massive fundraising drive, austerity policies on the part of the provincial government challenge the hospitality, the hospital's ability to fulfill its mandate. All over Ontario, operating rooms and emergency wards are closed for lack of staff. And what is the government's response? Instead of reinvesting and strengthening public Medicare, the government proposes to develop a cadre of private for-profit clinics. If it is successful in that intent, the hospital will lose public funds and the taxpayers' dollars will follow into profit's hands. This scheme breaks trust with those who so generously worked to ensure the community hospital was a state-of-the-art facility capable of serving all comers, and it breaks faith with all of those who depend on the public system. It doesn't have to be this way. Our hospitals should not be for sale. We can stop
Man, if you're interested.
rampant privatization and profiteering of
I'm in if you're interested.
Rampant profiteering of hospital services, not an election issue. Even Doug Ford denied that there was an intention to privatize. He has no mandate to advance it. I urge you to send a message to Queens Park and to your MPP to reinvest in the public system that is there for everyone. So at this point, I would like to ask Bernie Robinson to speak. Bernie has been a registered nurse for over thirty years and has worked in St. Francis Memorial Hospital in Emergency Acute Care, Complex Continuing Care, Dialysis, Telemedicine, and the Lynn Nursing Clinic. She is the interim president of the Ontario Nurses Association and is a board member of the Registered Nurses Association of Ontario. On to you, Bernie.
Thank you very much, Louise, and thank you to the Health Coalition for organizing this important town hall. ONA represents sixty-eight thousand nurses and healthcare professionals across this province, and we also represent eighteen thousand nursing students in Ontario. I'm really grateful to be here today with you and to have the opportunity to share what is happening in our healthcare system now and why we know that privatization is not the answer. At this point, anyone who is paying attention to the news, to social media, they've heard it before. Our nurses and our healthcare professionals have been stretched beyond the breaking point. We have been working in crisis mode now for almost three years. And at some point, it's not a crisis anymore. It becomes the new reality. And I think we all know that we can't accept this to be our new reality. We know that from the KAIHI, the Canadian Health Institute for Health Information data, that Ontario is the worst in the country when it comes to RNs per capita. Across Canada, there are eight hundred and thirty RNs per one hundred thousand people. But in Ontario, we only have six hundred and sixty-eight RNs for the hundred thousand people per capita. This means, just to be at the Canadian average, Ontario has to hire immediately twenty-five thousand RNs. Twenty-five thousand. So what does a staffing shortage of this magnitude look like in practice? It's really become commonplace for nurses to be kept at their hospital, long-term care homes, et cetera, for hours after their shift is supposed to end. And this is because either the next shift is short-staffed or the patient acuity is so high that it's not possible to safely transfer the patient care. We have nurses working on maternity floors in some hospitals, especially these large ones, where they would normally have thirty-five RNs on a shift, and the new normal is to have seventeen or eighteen. We have hospitals where there are more vacant RN positions than there are RNs on staff. And you have only to look at your small rural hospitals around Cornwall that are closing their doors at night because they don't have enough staff to serve the community. We know that nurses are resilient. They are extremely resourceful. They always put patient care first, and even in these difficult times, they try to do their very best. Our members always try to find ways to provide care that they know all patients need and especially that they deserve. But the cost of this burden, it is taking its toll. We have seen early retirements going up. We have seen our new graduates rethinking their careers and leaving nursing entirely after only one or two years on the job. Nurses are leaving to work at private agencies where they can ensure that they have a work-life balance. There's a very real cost to our healthcare system as this situation worsens. The Ford government is using this crisis to justify their privatization agenda, and that is despicable. Ford has taken an understaffed system, a system that they created, and made it so much worse by introducing Bill One Twenty Four. Bill One Twenty Four capped the wages of many of our nurses and healthcare professionals. I would say the majority of our nurses and healthcare professionals from ONA and has violated our charter rights. We won that battle in court, and he is choosing, choosing to put more money into fighting us in court again with this appeal. Ford is refusing to work with healthcare professionals to invest and implement any meaningful retention and recruitment plan. They have no plan. They have left our system severely understaffed with no relief in sight. Across this country, Canadians pride themselves on our world-class, universal healthcare system. We believe that access to healthcare should be based not on your needs and not on your bank account. Nurses and healthcare workers are strong advocates for public, nonprofit healthcare because we know the devastating impacts of privatization. The most broken parts of our healthcare system are the ones that are already privatized, like long-term care and home care. Private healthcare will take away from the public care by pulling resources and staff from the public system. As nurses, we have already seen this, as we've seen our colleagues have left the public system to go and work for private agencies. They've done this because agencies are paying two and sometimes three times what the hospitals are paying. And we can't blame these nurses who make that choice. The agencies will let the nurses choose their own hours, and they can pay more because conveniently enough, they are not subject to Bill One Twenty Four. So there is a serious cost. Those agencies charge outrageous prices to the public hospitals. They don't provide pensions, benefits, or sick days for their nurses. This undermines nursing as a stable career, and it undermines our healthcare system by siphoning off precious dollars and lining the pockets of corporate entities. This will impact access and quality of care, and it will hurt patients who can't afford to pay. And we, as Ontario citizens, cannot let this happen. Every one of us will need or has needed healthcare at some point in their life. Ontario's public health system is not dogfords to dismantle and sell off to corporate buddies. Our public healthcare system has been built up over generations, and it belongs to each and every one of us. That's why I'm here tonight. And I will continue to work hand-in-hand with our allies to fight for the investments we need in public healthcare so that everyone, everyone gets the care they need and deserve when they need it. Together, we can stop Doug Ford's plans in his tracks. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernie. I'd like to ask Tanis Brown, who is a local Cornwall area healthcare provider, to speak now, please.
Thanks, Louise. And following Bernie, yes, I am, I'm a, I'm here tonight as a local Cornwall area registered nurse. Almost twenty-three years ago, I became a registered nurse in Ontario and a registered nurse is licensed to practice by the College of Nurses of Ontario. And this requires a commitment to adhering to professional and practice standards of the college in order to protect public safety. One of the reasons I'm here tonight is to demonstrate my commitment to these responsibilities of the College of Nurses into the nursing profession. And doing so, you know, nurses are required to advocate for clients and help them to access appropriate healthcare. And we understand that there's many gaps impacting client care and that health outcomes may vary from community to community, but we're called on to work together to address these gaps as we are here tonight. We have a duty to report errors, behaviors, conduct, and system issues that affects client care and safety. And we're required to advocate for improving the quality of our practice setting to support safe and ethical healthcare services. Nursing care is a balance of clinical tasks and therapeutic care, comfort, and reassurance. Care, comfort, and reassurance is lost when there's only time for the tasks, and we know how important emotional well-being directly influences our overall health. The challenge for nurses and our allied healthcare professionals is our health and social services systems were not built on the principles of health equity. These symptoms, systems have and continue to be unfair, unjust, and the problems are avoidable. Connections between the sectors and systems and units and departments are not seamless. They don't connect easily. And it's the healthcare providers that have been figuring out how to make these unconnected puzzle pieces fit. They know the back doors to knock on. This is inefficient and it's not sustainable. And as Bernie has pointed out, as the workloads have just, you know, continued to increase for healthcare providers, the health and social needs of our communities have only increased. And we now are at a place where we can't make the current system work for the many or for everyone, and it's decreasing to make it only work for a small few. Health is a resource for living. It's the ability to identify and realize aspiration, satisfy our needs, and cope with a changing environment. Expanding privatization is perpetuating power and privilege in our society. At the same time, equity, diversity, inclusion is being cited as a common public and private sector priority. I say, you know, humanity should not and cannot be sold as a commodity. I'm looking forward to working alongside all of you to make a difference.
Thank you, Tanis. I'd like to introduce Doug Allen, who is a healthcare researcher with the Ontario Coalition of Hospital Employees in QP and the author of the blog Left Words, where he writes about politics and economics as well as the labor movement. He is a board member of the Ontario Health Coalition. Thank you for coming out with us tonight, Doug.
Thank you, Louise, and thank you for the words from Bernie and Tanis, and thank you, Britt, for starting the meeting. I would like to bring greetings from the Ontario Health Coalition Board and from our executive director Natalie Mara, who will be joining us shortly. And also on behalf of the hundreds of organizations which are part of the Ontario Health Coalition and tens of thousands of individual members across the province. Medicare is one of, Canadian public Medicare or healthcare is one of the main achievements of Canadian people that has brought unprecedented equality and care for citizens across the country. It is a fantastic achievement. The Canada Health Act enshrines that there is a single payer, a single public payer for medically necessary physician and healthcare, sorry, hospital services. This is now under very serious threat. Very serious threat. The privatization of the hospital services that comes with the, with moving surgeries and procedures to private for-profit clinics threatens the very existence of our public healthcare system. We have seen the results of what happens when privatization runs amok in America. Costs explode and care is reduced for those who can't afford it. We have tens of millions of Americans who, because they did not follow us on the path to universal public, publicly accessible hospital and physician services, now suffer with no insurance at all. Tens of millions more have inadequate insurance. Many go bankrupt. We can't let this cancer come to Ontario. We have to stop it right now. Nobody looked at that system, that Americanized system, and said, yes, that's what we want. And in fact, the Ontario Health Coalition during the election campaigned vigorously because we knew that this Ford government would try to privatize our surgeries and our procedures and privatize our hospital services. And we challenged the government on that very issue. They completely denied it. Completely denied it. You can't believe a word these guys are saying. Not about their calls for how you only will pay with your OHIP card, not your credit card, not about any other part of this reform. The threat is very real. And in fact, while they were denying to us and to the media that they were not privatizing the services, we subsequently found out only through the Financial Accountability Office's and its independent reports on government finances that they had actually increased the funding, increased the funding at that very moment for independent health facilities, the name of the private clinics as they currently exist. Completely outrageous, completely outrageous, but a sign of what we can expect. Currently, as Bernie noted, we are facing a very serious staffing crisis in Ontario, a staffing crisis that has been fed by this provincial government. We have, the Toronto Star revealed just the other day, we're working with the Ontario Health Coalition, a hundred and fifty-eight emergency department closures over the past year because of the staffing crisis. This is completely unprecedented. The government ignored it, downplayed it, dismissed it, but the reality is, we have never seen anything like that in Ontario before. This government's incompetence is staggering. And the government has done substantially nothing to address this except to offer the solution of American privatized healthcare. That is completely unacceptable to us. Instead of building up the hospitals, the hospital staff and the beds and the care, they have instead moved to create more competition for those very hospital staff that we need so much to recruit. Ontario currently, compared to the rest of Canada, has thirty-three thousand fewer staff than what we would have if we were in one of the other provinces or any of the, the average of the other provinces. Thirty-three thousand extra staff we need in our hospitals. That's seventeen percent more staff that we need. That also reflects on the number of beds that we're able to operate, which are at a low level. Ontario hospitals are funded at a very low level. We are not a poor province. We can afford to do better. We can afford to at least meet meet the average of the Canadian, of the, of the, other Canadian provinces. But that is not what this government proposes to do. Instead, it's, it's created, it has created a crisis and it's offering a solution which is not a solution, which will actually fragment our care. It inherently fragments our care and divides it. It will inherently require the development of extra infrastructure and extra equipment in order to provide those services, money that we can, we can't afford to fritter away. We have significant unused operating room capacity in our hospitals, and yet the government isn't using that. And yet, and worse, what we're finding is the private clinics who do not wish to invest in the infrastructure and the equipment that need it are now trying at this very moment to take over that unused hospital capacity. Why should we fragment our care like this? We have found that that despite all of this, what the Ford government announced is that they are moving ahead with this very rapidly. Almost immediately after their announcement, they announced that they were going to move fourteen thousand cataract surgeries to these for-profit clinics. They are looking to move forty-nine thousand hours of MRI and CT scans, forty-nine hundred other ophthalmic surgeries, one thousand gynecological surgeries, and two thousand eight hundred and forty-five plastic surgeries, and that's only a start. They're aiming for the very, the very center of hospitals surgeries, one of the most common categories surgeries, hips and knees in two thousand and twenty-four. Thirty-eight thousand hips and knee surgeries are done in Ontario hospitals. Those sorts of surgeries, along with the other less, pardon me, less complex surgeries, are the backbone of small-town and rural hospital surgeries. When those surgeries go, the hospitals are under threat. Already, for the more complex surgeries, patients are required to head to larger centers, to urban centers. The small hospitals specialize, to the extent they do surgeries, in less complex surgeries. There is nothing in the new bill that the government announced earlier this week that protects those smaller hospitals from losing their lifeblood. We need to defend our hospitals everywhere and our larger centers and especially in our smaller urban centers. When the hospital goes down or is weakened, the whole community is weakened. Very much as Louise mentioned, how vital a role Cornwall Community Hospital plays in the local community. The threat is very real. The Ontario Health Coalition has been aware that, that forces, large, important, powerful corporate forces have had their eye on taking over this work for years. Campaigns have gone on for a long time. In two thousand and seventeen, we published a second report reviewing what we found when we interviewed the private clinics, the for-profit clinics in Ontario, and almost universally, we found that not only did they, did they upsell, but they also, in many cases, also extra billed for services going directly against the sacred principles of the Canada Health Act. And why? Why is this particularly a threat with for-profit hospitals and for-profit clinics? It's because every time they do that, they increase their profits. Every time they do it, every time they charge you, every time they, they find all these creative and innovative ways to undermine and get around the Canada Health Act or convince a government like the Ford government to ignore the Canada Health Act or not enforce the Canada Health Act, they make a little bit more profit, a profit at our expense. And of course, and this again reflects on the comments earlier. They take the staff and funding from our local public hospitals. The funding that goes into these, these clinics could go into our public hospitals and not fragment the system and create a whole duplicate system. We need our staff in hospitals. What we know, what even the government admits, even while they obfuscate and confuse and dissemble on the question of extra billing, we know they specifically recognize that these clinics will try to upsell medically unnecessary services. Well, my friends, we don't have any time for medically unnecessary services. We have a backlog of two hundred and six thousand surgeries which are not done yet, and these guys want to set up a system that's built on, that's founded upon selling medically unnecessary services. We need our hospital staff. We need our nurses. We need our personal support workers. We need our RPNs. We need our doctors focused on providing and getting rid of that backlog of medically necessary surgeries. We need a focus. At the very least, we need a focus on medically necessary services, not a government gone wild and creating a system that focuses on upselling medically non-necessary services. We also know that these clinics cut corners and have serious quality issues. The issue first came to light when a young woman bled out at a clinic in two thousand and seven, a plastic surgery clinic, a clinic that wasn't staffed by a doctor that was a surgeon, but was staffed by a family physician. Imagine being operated on by a family physician. That created a whole series of uproar and concern in the community. The young woman died, bled out, waiting for an ambulance. And that's something that is very troubling about this reform is that there, there may not be a doctor on site when problems happen. There's no such requirement. But what's worse is the only way they can respond to emergencies is by calling nine-one-one. Well, good luck with that these days because ambulances are few and far between. We constantly have code reds, code zeros, where there are no ambulances available. We can't afford to have people lying on surgical beds waiting for an ambulance that doesn't arrive and bleeding out and dying. We can't afford that. After that fiasco, the government tried to regulate the private clinics, but they didn't take on that job. They passed it over to the College of Physicians and Surgeons, a college which has expressed concerns about how this may
So they can run ram through bills super quickly. It's in second reading now, it may have today finished second reading debate. I'm not, I didn't I get word yet. And it may actually pass second reading on Monday, they may pass it as quickly as next week. There's been no democracy, but there's no question, we can actually stop them from implementing it. So we'll fight this legislation because we can't make it easy for them. But we also need to make it impossible to implement, and that means that the vast majority of Ontarians who oppose this need to make it visible somehow. And what we thought was, well, we should hold a referendum. We should hold a referendum and we should ask regular Ontarians of every walk of life to vote and to vote as to whether or not we want to see our local public hospital services cut and privatized. And I can guarantee you that the vast majority of Ontarians oppose this. So let's make it impossible to ignore. Let's hold a referendum in which we ask people to um have voting stations end of May, May Friday, May the twenty sixth and Saturday, May the twenty seventh. Um, so that's the weekend after the long weekend in May. Um, the long weekend, the Monday, the twenty second is the holiday. So busy shopping is Friday and Saturday. How, let's put up voting stations outside coffee shops and convenience stores and the library and um uh in inside legions or busy um uh shopping places in the community, local grocery stores and the like. Let's um have volunteer staff those tables and collect votes. Let's have for the two weeks leading in every workplace that we can get to do a workplace vote, the industrial workplaces, the unionized workplaces. You know, the nurses I see Bernie is nodding away, the nurses and the healthcare staff in the hospitals. Could they do a vote in the hospitals? Could we do it in the long term care homes? Could we do it in the mun- municipality? Could we do it in? You know, the childcare centers, could we do it in the not for profit agencies and the seniors clubs and all of that stuff? In the few likes, let's say, two to three weeks leading in to the end of uh May. Could we had do online voting? Um, could we possibly put a ballot in the local newspaper and have people be able to cut it out and mail in a ballot? We would ask people to sign a pledge that they would only vote once, that they're over sixteen, that they're a permanent resident of Ontario um and with their postal code, because that's a unique identifier. So that um, you know, uh, you know, people have to pledge to only vote once, and there's some um uh integrity uh to it and just collect as many votes as we can in the community. We've done this before, we did it, the government, a previous government tried to bring in um, actually several governments, P three privatization. It's kind of a halfway step between fully privatizing the hospitals and partially um and having a public hospital. And we held referendum, citizen called referendums in eight towns. And we asked people to vote, just like where I'm talking with you about. We got, I think, a hundred and ninety-eight thousand votes or something like that in the eight towns. And we rolled back, we, the government was calling us and saying, what, you know, to me, we know that you'll never go to green light on this, but what's it gonna take to get you from red light to orange light? You know, it was like, Uncle, what are you, what's it gonna take to get you to stop? And ultimately, what they did was they stopped privatizing all of the services of the hospitals and bundling bundling them into a thirty year deal, like massive amount of the privatization and the deals was stopped. That's what we accomplished, it was amazing. And then another time when the government tried to privatize the surgeries and diagnostics, we again, in a few particular towns held referendums. And again, we stopped the government from doing it. A big petition in Ontario is like twenty thousand to thirty thousand signatures, that's a big petition. I believe uh we have eight hundred thousand members or so in the Ontario Health Coalition now. I believe we could get a million votes. Um, and that would shake any government of any political strength. So we wanted to talk with you about how could we do this in Cornwall and area? Could we also branch out to Hoxbury and the other towns along the Quebec border there and the regional towns um through the counties around you uh to try and get at least a few voting stations in those places? Would people be willing to volunteer to help to do that? And just to give you a very visual picture, if you don't mind, just, it's a two minute video. I just want to show you um the video of. Sorry, I gotta set it up on my computer. Ah, um, the video of what the referendum looks like on the ground, is that okay? Uh Louise, just a two minute thing?
Yes, of course, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. And then, and then hopefully we can open up for discussion and so on, just one second. Okay, here it is. I love this, it's like, it's very fun. Okay, one second, here we go.
This looks very much like an election campaign, except it's not. It's a plebiscite vote that's actually citizen run, not government run. It's put together by the Ontario Health Coalition, asking citizens if they want a public or a private hospital.
If, well, the drivers have extra ballots, so if they need more, like if they run out in their trucks, then I will let them know you guys have some extra.
The phone's been nonstop, people are interested, uh, they want to learn more. Um, they've been very supportive of the campaign, we've had very little people coming in upset about what we're doing.
Well, we're holding a community wide plebiscite, which is a community wide vote, like a referendum. Only it's organized by citizens group, by the Kingston Health Coalition um about the future of the new hospital in Kingston, whether it's going to be a public not for profit hospital or whether it'll be built as a P three privatized P three hospital with thirty year long contracts with a private for profit multinational consortium.
Uh, some people wonder how this affects healthcare, they say, well, the healthcare system remains public because nurses and doctors will be paid by the government. But the model of the P three hospital is a, is a step in quite a dangerous direction.
Some of the more conservative members of uh council have tried to argue that uh we shouldn't have any role in it as municipal councillors because it's a provincial issue.
So we're very concerned in the city of Kingston about uh, well, about uh where are the, where is the money from our property taxpayers going? And uh it turns out that it's going to uh to fund a consortium that over time will make twelve percent uh on their invested money. So uh that twelve percent is, part of that twelve percent is coming from our property taxpayers.
It's been really positive, it's actually really cool, people are pretty excited, especially when they hear that there's a hundred and eighty other volunteers out there on the ground uh doing this as well. Uh, it's just such an incredible feeling of solidarity, everybody. Even though they've been out there in the cold for an eight hour day, they're, they have no problem doing it, they're having fun and having a great time.
It's been very hectic, super hectic, um, we had three volunteers here for most of the day. And we barely had a chance to have a drink of coffee and we're right here in Tim Hortons, so that just goes to tell you how busy we've been.
All the businesses have just been so warming and welcome to allow us to be able to sit up these polls. It's been a great, great um, great commitment by the businesses here in Kingston.
It was a huge victory, and you know, you talk to people on the street, everybody knows what's happening, it's now become a public issue. And it wasn't, two months ago, nobody even knew we were getting a new hospital. So we've elevated the debate and the public sort of discussion and the democracy around this healthcare policy to a level which is phenomenal. That's the value in a sense of validating that whole discussion, all that work that was done. And then as the next step forward, we're going to be able to say to the government and the politicians, you know, this community really cares. We want a public healthcare system.
So that's what it looks like, it's so neat. And it really is very, very effective. So um anyway, thank you for bearing with us and I'll just add in with this. In Alberta, if you remember Mike Harris, do people here remember Mike Harris? Most people, people are nodding. So um Mike Harris privatized home care. And it's been a disaster ever since, he privatized long term care. And we all saw what happened through the pandemic, and now Doug Ford is coming for the hospitals. And we just can't let it happen, you know? In Alberta, at the same time as the Mike Harris government was doing its thing, they were very similar uh under the Ralph Klein government, and they brought in a bill to privatize the hospitals and people lined up on the highway, you know, all the, you know, for miles and miles and miles to come into the legislature to protest. People, I remember watching it on TV and people were hanging from the banisters protesting this bill that they brought in and the Friends of Medicare in Alberta, our sister organization um organized patients, they brought in for profit MRI and CT clinics. And they organized patients to collect their bills. And they collected thousands of them from patients who've been charged for their medically necessary scans in the MRI and CT clinics. And they made big complaints to the federal government and the province, and we helped protest across the country. And ultimately, the Klein government was forced to pay back every patient that had paid for a medically necessary MRI or CT in the private clinics, it was amazing. And Ralph Klein said in the legislature that public healthcare was the electric third rail of Canadian politics, which I always loved because it was like, it was not a compliment from him. But uh, you know, they've got the railway and the, the two tracks, the train goes down and in between is the electrified third rail on that carries the electricity and you dare not touch it or you would be electrocuted. And I thought, that's perfect, that's what we do, we electrify the third rail, let's make them afraid to touch our public healthcare, it doesn't belong to them, it belongs to us, thank you very much.
Thank you Natalie, you're inspirational as always. And uh at this point, I'd like to ask people if they have a question to uh to ask. If you could put your name in the chat, then Britt could call up your it call you up as we go and then we would have people kind of in order, hopefully. Or you could put your hand up in the reactions as well, either way would would work. If we have anyone that has, just let us know who you would like the question to be directed to.
I have one. I wanted to know from Bernie, how did the, you've had pickets all across Ontario today, how was it, was it amazing? The nurses went out everywhere.
We, we had a pretty good turnout in Ottawa considering the weather, weather, I was at the two pickets, the one at the general and shield campuses, as well as the one at the civic campus. And um although it was not as well attended as we, we would have liked because of the weather situation and people were, you know, afraid to be out and stuff and it was pretty cold. But um we had a lot of um engagement there, we had a lot of energy. And we certainly got a lot of honking on the streets uh by the public. So uh we're, we uh were very proud to be out there fighting for the better uh staffing, care and wages that we're looking for with this collective agreement.
Cool, well, people are putting it in the chat, I've seen stuff, pictures from all over Ontario from it. I just think, great, I hope that inspires more, you know, more of this, thank you for what you're doing. I wondered if people locally, if people would be willing to volunteer to help Louise with your, like if, if can we do the referendum, would people be willing to help out locally? And then the kinds of things that people might be willing to do? Like, we need liquor store, you know, the boxes that you get, did you see in the, in the video? The ballot boxes are liquor store boxes. And we just cover them with brown paper and put tape around and then we can tape them up to seal when, when we need to seal them to transport them and people can sign, there's a whole system. But we need probably hundreds of them. So you know, every time you go to the liquor store, can, you know, can you get a bunch of boxes? We need voting stations, if you know, stores um in the area, I don't want to take over on you Louise, but I'm just thinking if there are concrete volunteer things, um that people might want to identify what they are interested in doing to help leafleting door to door as the weather gets better. Um, you know, organizing a workplace vote, organizing a vote in a community college. If you're in a smaller town that isn't Cornwall, could you identify that you want to volunteer in a particular town? Um, because then maybe we could get a voting station there, that kind of thing?
Yeah, those are all good places to start, we will need people to uh to get signs for their, for their houses or apartment windows. Uh, we hope to have some signs for the um car windows as well, those are always really good. And um we, we will have pamphlets for leafleting in French and in English. So that uh you know, all of our community can participate in this. And we've already got, a lot of the unions have agreed that they would go ahead and, and you know, hold the workplace vote, so those are good. And uh we hope to have a couple of places where we'll have drive in, you know, drive through that they, people that.
Oh, good idea, drive through voting.
Yes, because we have people with, you know, mobility issues or something like that, so that they'll be able to drive through. And uh people will just come and hand them the ballot, they can sign the the forms there, and uh so we hope to, to get all of the sectors of our community able to participate. And we sure, we need a lot of volunteers.
I see in the chat, there are already dozens of them, so exciting. Um, so that's awesome. And in Brockville, we would love to do it in Brockville, if we can get enough volunteers together to do it in Brockville, we would love to. So if you want to help in Brockville, we do have maybe three or four people that might be interested, but we need, you know, just a couple, few, couple more and we'll have enough.
And it's not a huge time commitment, you know, during those few days, it'll be a little bit more work, but it's it's not a huge time commitment and we hope to have it in shift, so nobody would be standing there for two or three hours, you know, without relief and, you know, we're going to try to have it so that it's fun for people and and a good way to meet people and see people in your community. And we all know in eastern Ontario in May, how beautiful it is. To be able to, it never rains in May.
Oh, like people are offering to travel and help, ah, so long Sue, okay? It really is fun. And then, so are people willing to like also help, you know, put up signs? Or um find voting locations, I think you've already started Louise, right, in trying to find.
Yeah, we have some of our voting locations already done, we have, as I said, we have some of uh our unions have committed to helping us. Um, and uh we have a couple of housing projects where we have people that will do leafleting. And um that they would uh hold something in their building for their, you know, for people, so they don't have to travel too far.
Wonderful. So the next steps for us would be to hold a regional big Zoom meeting, no speeches or anything like that, just a kind of working meeting to identify um who are the key leads in each town, let's say Brockville. Or let's say Kempville, or you know, any of the towns uh in and around there. We have people in Jones's Falls and Smith's Falls and all through the countryside. Uh, I think there's some people in Hoxbury. Um, you know, so could we identify if there's a couple people in several, a number of towns? Who's in Cornwall and can help? And then kind of walk through the organizing plan for each of those communities. That would just be kind of a working Zoom meeting, that would be late March, so about a month from now. By the beginning of March, we'll have all the materials finalized, that's the ballot, the leaflets. Um, we'll ask everyone to work on getting the voting stations as quickly as possible. Because for each leaflet, which is like a folded page with the date of the vote and information for people and so on. We want to put an insert that would have your list of voting stations. So for dropping them off door to door, if people want to drive the rural routes and put them in post boxes, if that's a possibility, or um, you know, hand them out at community meetings, seniors meetings, union meetings. The um, um, you know, all whatever other types of groups and faith communities and some areas, the churches will be doing it, et cetera. Um, leading in, so then, so we'll kind of walk through all of that. Uh, then beginning of April, in person meetings to deliver the stuff, the lawn signs, the ballots, the sign out sheets for ballots and ballot, but you know, all of that material um and leaflets and so on, and then distribute them to start getting them out through the community. Um, and then uh you really start to launch the votes um uh and leading with the workplace votes and online voting and then the street voting. So um we would want to get together with everyone if that's okay, but no speeches or anything, just to do kind of make this very concrete in a few weeks, once all the materials are ready. Kind of walk through that and then do some trainings as well for people who want some training on the issue, so they can talk with people about it. And then an in person meeting to distribute the materials and go.
James was asking, do we know the actual question?
Um, I haven't got it just yet, but it's very basic, it's something like, you know, do you do you, oh, oh gosh, why my, my, my brain is melting down. Um, do you want um uh the government to support our public not for profit hospitals? Or um cut uh cut their services and and privatize them to for profit clinics and hospitals, something like that, very basic kind of question, yes, no?
And we have a meeting of the, of the Cornwall Coalition scheduled for the nineteenth of March at the Benson Centre at one o'clock, so.
Oh, great, okay.
We'll send that out, if people aren't here, they could see that too.
Okay. There's lots of stuff in the chat, so we'll save the entire chat as well, cause I'm, I don't have time to, like, I'm not managing to read everything, but we'll read everything and Louise and uh Will as well and and we'll follow up with everybody about the things that people are suggesting. Any ideas that you have also are most welcome to, you know, just make this as big as possible. And Louise, what was that date?
March nineteenth, it's a Sunday, okay.
I just wanted to highlight uh Bernie's comment, she said, will votes be available for April first? We have a big leadership meeting in Toronto in early April, and we could probably get over six hundred votes one, in one day there.
For sure, and maybe what we should do is have ballot boxes and stuff ready for people who want to bring them back to their workplaces to do workplace votes if they want, maybe we can work that out, that would be.
Yeah, so Natalie, it's our, it's our leadership meeting, so we have uh we invite all bargaining unit presidents from across Ontario uh to come to this meeting. And I think it would be a prime opportunity for them to be able to take ballots home and have their, their members sign the ballots. And um I don't know how you would do that, but I mean, we have everybody from um, you know, Dryden um south, basically, so it's a huge turnout that we have and uh I think it, it would be a really great opportunity.
Totally, okay, we'll work that out, we can totally do that. Because we just have a sign out system, because you can't just sort of have ballots floating all over the province and not because people could print their own or whatever, right? So we'll have a sign out system for the ballots. And we'll just arrange that if your folks are taking them, then we'll notify the local coalition and then they return, they they, you know, drop off the filled ballot box, sealed ballot box or envelope or what, whatever it is. If they're traveling by plane, we'll give them a sealed envelope um to the uh, to the nearest local coalition. Be very cool.
Yeah, so I don't know, we might, we might, we, we probably should uh partner with the uh Toronto uh chapter and um maybe, maybe do it through that or something, but um you and I can talk about it, that's great.
Sounds wonderful, and so that kind of thing we could do with, if people are involved in workplaces or organizations in Cornwall and area as well, like for the schools, for example, the teachers, there's like an inter school mailing system. So if people wanted to do it in the schools and could do it, they could do, you know, the sealed envelopes, they could just use a sealed envelope as a sealed ballot box, same principle, we'll send a sort of instruction sheet because they should be taped and signed properly and things like that, so they um but uh and then, and then mail uh in the ballots through um, you know, to whoever's collecting them, those sorts of things are possible. Anyway, to, just to give, spark people's imaginations about how to do it.
Yeah, some of our work, of our hospital workplaces have over seventeen thousand workers. Can you imagine what that would do to reaching to the total?
It would be amazing.
I, I think that even if you're doing it uh in the hospital, you could do it part of a union meeting. And um people would, would just vote quickly and, you know, on us at the union meeting and uh have a whole bunch done that way. And the union stewards are used to holding votes, they do that all the time, so they, they're pretty experienced, they always have a witness and sign off and those kinds of things. So I think in those places, it would be pretty easy to organize.
Yeah. And then we did it in like all of the nonprofit agencies in some communities as well. We just went through and we asked them, would you hold a vote, and most of the staff, I mean, obviously, people don't want to see their hospitals cut and privatized, they just don't want to see that and are more than willing to make it happen, so it's kind of fun. So if, if I will just need people to help, if you can ask, like if you're a member of any kind of organization, um, you know, can we get a vote happening in that organization somehow? And you'll need to, in your meeting, kind of map that, you know, like who's part of what? And you's gonna ask who and, you know, try and make it just as big as possible, if that's good.
Yes, we have a commitment from OSSTF, that was a question there.
That's the Ontario Secondary.
Yeah, in the Catholic.
Area.
Yeah, and the Catholic teachers either, which is a big part of eastern Ontario, those two groups. And ETFO, I think they will be on board and.
That's the elementary teachers for the uninitiated.
Yeah, and I spoke to the French teachers as well, and they, they were talking positively about it as well, so. And that, that's a big sector, you know, it goes all the way to, you know, Ganonakwaye and up north to Almont.
Wonderful.
It's a huge area.
The Council of Canadians is helping as well, and I think what, you know, in some areas, the legions, like people are going to bring the votes into the legions and that's uh working. That works, we did that before as well in some communities.
Louise in the chat also asked if you're able to bring their boxes into church services?
Yeah, hoping, Elaine and I were hoping to talk to the interfaith group, where they have the ministers from all of the faith groups that join together and they have a monthly luncheon, so Elaine and I were hoping to speak to them. And uh, you know, explain what it is, and at that point, we could have people from, from those uh faith groups would hold the votes in their churches or, you know, after church service or however they want to organize it. But we thought it would be easier to speak to that group altogether than trying to speak to, you know, fourteen different people. We're going to do that with the service clubs as well, because we hope a lot of those people would be, you know, willing to volunteer as well.
Wonderful. So amazing, you're doing amazing stuff. So I think it's gonna happen very, like it sounds great, it's well underway already in Cornwall. And in the communities around, we'll do everything we can um to support and help. So as we get closer, we'll need to know, if you're from a town, do you have a weekly newspaper or a um like a penny saver that goes?
It's only being published every three weeks now.
Oh my gosh, okay, and in the towns around? Because if we can afford it, we'll put the list of voting stations, like a, a leaflet with a list of voting stations and a bit of info in all of those and get them, you know, out to everybody and um we'll also, if we can afford it, depends on, you know, how we're doing for money. We have to raise the money, obviously, to do this, it'll be as big as, you know, what we're able to raise. But um we will provide some staff support as well in communities like yours, where they're really doing it and doing a good job of it um to help uh support and because it is, you know, well, you'll need some extra help.
We, we have, we have a commitment from some groups to, to help with funding as well. The, the local NDP Association pledged five hundred dollars uh to us and uh and I think that the, some of the teachers unions will come up with some funds as well.
That's amazing, Bernie, I think had her hand up. Oh, you didn't, sorry, you were clapping, okay. Well, that's amazing, thank you.
Yeah, I think that uh we'll have good support from most of the councillors in the city.
That's amazing. So then the next step, Louise, is your local meeting? To kind of, okay, and that is March nineteenth?
Yeah.
And so does everyone have all the info that you need and so on? I just thank you so much for the support and being willing to make this work and happen there, thank you. So I think. Britt for helping with this.
Yes, thank you Britt, Britt is, has been a real godsend because I'm so technical, technology challenged, so uh she's, she's been helping me with that. And uh thank you and all the speakers for coming out, we really appreciate your energy and your passion for this. You know, the true, and the true meaning of the passion for it. You know, it's kind of overused sometimes, but I don't think it is in this sense, so. Thank you so much to everyone for coming and we'll have, if you put your name in the chat, we'll uh be in touch with you in the next few weeks.
Thank you, and Britt is, Britt, you're gonna save the chat, right?
Absolutely, uh Courtney's already on it, she's created a volunteer sheet as a Google Doc, so people. Wonderful.
We love you. Okay, thanks, thank you Douglas. Good night, thanks Bernie, thanks Tennis, Louise, I think Elaine is here somewhere. Thanks to all our friends, it's nice to see a bunch of you again after a long time. Okay, good night everyone.
Good night.
Have a good night.